Introduce ourselves and I'll start over here with.
Mike Young.
Diane Chapassa.
Liz Banks.
Marge Cooney.
Dave Zonia.
Thank you. So the first order of business is going to be the approval of the minutes from May 19th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes. Did everybody review them?
Well, let's see. If anybody has any questions, then you can make your motion.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was looking to see. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 19, 21.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Zoda.
Yeah.
And all those in favor? Okay, five to nothing. The next order, we have two more minutes. So we have two minutes, so we'll wait a minute before we start the public hearing. I could read the agenda. So at 6:35, there's going to be a public hearing for a special permit for 100 Paradise Lane. And then at 6:50, there will be a determination for 9 Williams Road. Then old business, new business, and adjourn. Yeah, go ahead.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 18th, 2021, at 6:35, the Town of Sturbridge, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566, on the application of M.A.D. Toronto Family Realty Trust. The application is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05, and Chapter 24, Section 24.09, A through E of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conformal structures or uses for the property located at 100 Paradise Lane. The applicant is proposing to raise and rebuild the existing single-family house and detached garage. The new residence will be constructed 45.3 feet from the shoreline, and the detached garage will be constructed 29.7 feet from the existing road. The proposal requests... I, Janaya, I just keep reading this whole thing, right?
Yep.
The proposed requests can be viewed at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge dot GOV slash zoning board of appeals slash pages slash recent filings or arrangements can be made to view the application and plan by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Board at 508-347-2508, or by email at jlyceysturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided to the public, the meeting, hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for an in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Members of the public who wish to participate remotely may listen or watch the meeting online via the town's on-demand video broadcast on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455, enter 1428 pound for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during the public meeting. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge dot GOV slash town administrator slash pages slash how access virtual meeting. Liz Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. So this is for a special permit to demolish an existing home and construct a new single-family home and garage at 100 Paradise Lane. We received memorandums from the town planner, Jean Bouffon, and the fire department, which just is requiring the smoke and CO2 detectors be installed as per Mass General Laws. The building inspector said it meets all but one setback in area, no objections. Department of Public Works had no comments on the proposal. And conservation, it's still... It's got continued, correct?
No. It was approved.
It was approved?
The conservation hearing the other night, last night...
Last night?
It's approved.
Oh.
No, no, I don't think that's right. Sorry, this is Michael Dederondo. They continued it to next month, yes? Because there was no... There was no... Sorry.
Michael Dederondo is on the computer.
Sorry.
Excuse me. I watched that part a bit, and you still have to wait for the DEP to give...
Correct.
No, no.
That's what I understood.
Right, no, no.
That's what it sounded like. I watched the meeting also, and they continued it.
No, they didn't. It was issued under DEP file number 1103, and it was approved by the last night relative to the construction of the house. And it was... The Board of Health previously approved the construction of the house to have two bedrooms.
Well, what about the end of leave the dock? I thought that was the...
No, Mr. Jaber, we're talking about two different houses.
...under Chapter 91, which is separate, which is going to have to go before the Board of Selectmen.
I understand that.
And there was a letter written by the Conservation Commission. There was a fee under Article 5, which was $100, which I paid for. That's going under that. Now, what's going to happen there is the dock itself is going to go to the Board of Selectmen for approval, going to the Planning Board for approval, and then going to the Conservation for approval. So there's actually three steps on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It has to go back to...
That has nothing to do with the construction of the house.
I know. I said that. It had to do with the end of leave the dock.
Just the dock, and you're right.
Okay.
Okay.
You didn't listen to me.
Marge, I'm crying.
Okay.
Okay, before we proceed, I'd like to start from the beginning. And in starting, I'd like to submit the certified butters list, which was sent to 24 different people and certified, and also the legal ads for the 529th for the town. So it's also added as per the requirements in the town itself. The building itself actually was presented to the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission, what they did there is... I'm sorry, I got confused. The Conservation Commission last night continued the meeting on the grounds that DEP file number was not submitted. The one for lead mine was approved, and I got confused.
That's right. I know. I watched.
You're right, Marge. You're usually never wrong.
So it was continued?
It was continued, yeah.
It was continued because of the fact that there's no file number.
Okay.
Okay? And you're right.
Can you hear me?
But as far as the dock thing, you're right there too.
Yep.
Okay. What it actually is here is that, just to show you, on the file that it's done on the 2127, the house itself is actually being moved back from the waterfront to be roughly 45.3 feet from the lake itself, where the Conservation Commission has 50 foot normally, where the house rate presently is 21 feet. So the removal of the house itself to where it's going to be at the 45 feet, going through a couple hearings with Conservation, that was not the real problem with the Conservation Commission. There was only one issue with the Conservation Commission, and that was the driveway itself, which is having two accesses off of Paradise Lane and also a budding and connecting to Lot 98. That was really the only point of conjection relative to the board itself, which we will be going back to them. What we want to do is the paving area on that thing, we were going to go with a pervious pavement on it, and we didn't discuss it mainly because we never got a file number for it. The house itself is actually going to include the detached garage, which is going to be off of Paradise Lane. With the structures on the property, with the house and the garage, is going to be at 14.75 percent. What it is, it's actually just slightly below the 50 percent requirement as far as coverage on the lot. The setback requirements for the property, which before was roughly 21 feet from the frontage on the lake, and it's now going to be at 45 feet, and that the sideline elevation for the building actually, right now as it sits, is roughly nine feet. Where today, we're going to be putting at, it's going to be at 16 feet and 20 feet, would mean that sideline requirements are going to be equal to the zoning restriction. So what we're doing is we're not looking for any variances. The garage itself, which is detached, which is located on the most westerly portion of the property, is going to be 16 feet from the budding property, which is beyond the setback, and it's going to be located 30 feet from the actual traveled way of Paradise Lane. So the building will conform as far as the setbacks to the physical layout of the budding sites and everything. So basically, you know, with the setbacks, we have no problems there. And then with the letters that came back from the town, they didn't have any set requirements on that. The only thing that we have right now is the frontage itself, and the frontage itself is that what he's doing is putting in a proposed new dock. And I'll go on that. That was on the proposed new dock. You can't get the permit right now. It's under the Chapter 91 regulations. And what it is really is after the approvals come with the Board of Health, which is going to have town sewer and say the ZVA, once we get an affirmative on that and the Board of Selectmen, then we can go in Conservation, then we can go to DEP under Chapter 91 and get the permit for what they call a permanent dock. The permanent dock is a word that they use in the state, which is, well, relatively meaningless in the fact that the permanent dock is only good for 14 years. I don't know what permanent means, but anyway, that's it. You have to remove it after 14. So, but they do call it a permanent dock. As far as the frontage along the area for Begallum, it's roughly 95 feet. What's happening there is we've got a plan that was submitted to the Conservation Commission about opposition on what is done by ground effects, which shows that the area in the front would be laid with boulders and everything with two step accesses on the property itself. There was no complaint on that. Like I say, the only complaint we had relative to, or should I... The only conjecture we had was the actual driveway itself, on whether it should be pervious or impervious, or whether we should have the whole driveway or a smaller driveway. That's all we came up with. If any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
What was the... I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
What was the percentage of impervious, of the impervious?
The actual, for the buildings themselves, 14.75.
So that's for the pervious? Or it's for the impervious?
Oh, impervious. The driveway itself, you mean? That would be adding roughly, let's see, 20s and 100 to be a... They'd be running roughly another 8 percent, you know, for the driveway. And what we said, that we weren't going to go to pervious driveway, we're going to go to... I mean, if we're going to a pervious driveway, whether the impervious, that's the question between that and Conservation. Well, we showed it before, as it's shown here, is that it was going to be, you know, impervious, but it's not. We're going to have to go to pervious.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions to start off with. In the application, it talks about demolition of the existing home and the detached garage. Is there a detached garage on the property right now?
No, it's gone.
It's gone already?
Correct. It was gone years ago. They tore it down, right.
Okay, because I didn't see it on the plan, and I didn't see it in the...
It's not the...
Lot coverage computations?
No. It was gone, I don't know how many, many years ago. It's actually, you know, the place was built in 1940 with the garage and everything, but it's, you know, it was gone a long time ago.
And another question I had was, to get from the garage to the house, there's no stairway or anything in the new plan?
No, what it is, the garage itself actually is 28 feet wide, so the access from the garage, from the upper level to the lower level will be an inside stairwell, which makes about four feet, which gives you the 24-foot garage for two cars. That's why the building's 28 feet wide, because it's an enclosed stairwell. Because if you look at it on the plan, on the upper side of the garage elevation, that level right there is 102 feet for the garage level, which is on that upper level, and then the lower floor level is at 89. So you've got roughly 12 to 13-foot drop between the first and second floor, which is an interior stairwell for access to the lower level to the house. So it's interior.
It's going to be covered or underground?
It's going to be part of the structure.
Yeah, but the house is so far away. I don't really understand that.
No, what it is, no, it's actually the upper level of the garage, okay? Which is at 102. In other words, if you look at the garage, it's two-story.
Right.
Okay? The upper story is at 102.
Yeah.
The lower level is at 89.
Okay. On the...
So you've got two layers of garage right there.
Yeah, I got that.
So it's up and down.
Yeah.
And then you have easy access from there to the house. And the reason for the garage to the house, which is roughly 27 feet, is the turning radius of the cars pulling out of the garage downstairs have plenty of time and access to get out to go to the road itself.
Because I did do a site visit. I didn't go... I mean, it's like impossible to get down there. I just looked from up above. It's pretty steep.
You need a parachute.
Yeah. It's very steep. I was really...
But it's an interior stairwell.
All right. And the other question I have, so it talks about being on Lot 11 and half of 12? And I just was wondering, what is on Lot 12 now?
What is on the lot presently is...
It says that, let me find it. Well, it's even on the map. It shows Lot 11 and then half of Lot 12. And it refers to that also in one of the documents. But, so my question is, is the house now on Lot 11 or Lot 12? Or how does that...
The property itself, which what we're talking about right here is at 100 Paradise Lane.
Right.
Okay? The other place, which is 98 Paradise Lane...
Yeah.
Okay? Is the split between that lot. So the half of that lot went on to 98, okay? And then the...
So half of Lot 12, according to this map, is actually part of 98 Paradise Lane?
That is correct. Yep.
And so the house sits on both lots, 11 and half of 12?
You obviously... Can I come up and show you?
Using this, yeah?
Yeah. Marge. Here's his house right now. This here is 98.
Right.
The one we're discussing right now is just from here, which is 100. Okay?
This is the one coming down?
That is correct. This is half of that lot we're talking about, which we...
And there's the other half.
Okay.
Does it have it on the map?
Well, it is. It's actually, if you look at, the yellow is taken over the line right there.
Right.
It's actually half.
Right.
Okay? And that's the way it was. It was actually split between it. So this one's here, it's right here at this corner, and that's our mistake.
Okay.
Do you see that?
Mm-hmm. Nice.
You see it?
Yes, thank you. I was just seeing if I had any more.
No, going back to that, the way it says detached garage on the application, it makes you think that there is now a detached garage. There hasn't been one there for years and years.
The whole house?
That's what I'm saying. It never showed it on the plans and that. And when I read the deed description, so what I'm saying is, I think the verbiage is what's confusing here. It's not the fact. I think if you just said to raise and rebuild the existing structure and construct a...
Correct. We have that if you look at the calculations with the existing structure, which is at that 6.84, which is actually just the house itself.
No, I know. But what I'm saying is, I think that should be adjusted to read, you know, being that we have to get everything right in case there's ever some kind of a legal battle.
Correct. What it is right now, if you look at the Sturbridge zoning, the chart that's there, the 6.84 percent depicts what is actually there now, which is the existing house.
I know.
Period. No garage.
I'm just talking about your verbiage, the way you present it on the application.
Okay, the application was, but we eliminated it on the plan, so...
No, I know. I know.
I'll be happy to...
Well, that's what I said. It should be removed from there. Instead of saying "and detached garage," it should said "and construct a garage."
Okay, we could do that, yes. I'll be happy to initial if you want it.
And the one for our record. You know, being a quasi-legal board, we have to, in case you have any buddies down the road that are going to try to bring a lawsuit or anything.
Right, I know.
We want to cover ourselves.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
It's nice when you agree.
We always agree.
Do you have any more questions, Marge?
I think I'm good.
Do you have any questions?
No whatsoever.
Diane?
No questions.
Oh, I do have one more.
You have another one? Okay.
The drip edge around the garage and that, that's all going to be crushed stone?
Absolutely.
And how far out is it to crush stone?
Roughly three feet.
Three feet. I feel good. Thank you.
All right. And you did say that was a shared driveway, correct?
I'm sorry, what?
It was a shared driveway, is that what you said earlier?
It's the earlier.
And I was the...
The driveway, the way it is now, the way it's shown on the plan, is actually a shared driveway between Lot 98 and Lot 100.
Okay, and it's owned by the same people?
Correct.
Is there somebody in the audience?
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, he can come on. Thank you.
Hello, Michael, wherever you are, I heard your voice. I know you're here somewhere. My name is Hitchcock, and I'm a butler at number 102, immediately next to this property.
Excuse me, Hitchcock?
Hitchcock, right.
Thank you.
Yes. First, I'd like to acknowledge Michael and Liz is right to use their land as they see fit. They are wonderful labors, and I'm sure whatever they build will be of great quality. That being said, I came tonight to gather information and to share a little bit of historical perspective. If I didn't, I have four basic concerns. If I didn't come tonight, I would always feel bad that I haven't. So I hope that you will bear with me while I share those. Next door to Lot 100, I bought Massey's Camp in 1977, and I worked through our town boards to have a survey done by Jalbert Engineering and my building plans by Steiger Engineering approved. Jalbert's survey at the time was verbally corroborated by Mr. Grant, who owned the property at the time. Jalbert's new survey, done recently for my help with the Dederondos, gave them a strip of land that's on that picture there, that I always thought was mine. When Mr. Grant lived there, he walked the property with me and Mr. Jalbert back then, and there was a stake. It was not a stake, it was a metal thing that was stuck on a tree, and he said, "That's where you own it." So I have, all these years, assumed that was mine. I hired... This is a very steep property going all the way down, as anybody will attest that's gone there. And this steep strip coming down, we used to just have a dirt road there, would wash the dirt and the salt and everything else would come running down that hill whenever we had heavy rains, and really create kind of a waterfall effect coming down and going into the lake. So I hired Dunn Engineering to create a system to kind of clean it before it hit our lake, because we're all very concerned about having a nice, clean lake. And then I paid a crew to build a sewer system to come from the top of the hill down, and it has four places coming down that are like stone, so the water comes down, it's formed to go into these drains.
Like pits?
Filtered all the way down to the bottom, and then they're filtered to the bottom. I have to physically get down to my hands and knees with a shovel and clean that out twice a year. They also tied my eaves that come off the side of my house into that, so any debris coming down, it all gets washed, it all gets filtered before it gets down into the lake. I'm requesting, when this is approved, and I hope it is approved, but then because, as I say, they're wonderful people, it's going to be nice, that in writing, someone will continue to maintain that drainage system. Because if you don't and it fills up, it would back up into my house, and it would stop serving to keep our lake nice and clean. So I would like that addressed, hopefully, by this board. The town also, I guess, believed that that land was mine, because they placed my sewer pump on what now Michael is claiming is his land. And I went to Mr. Jalbert when I saw Michael's new, what he owned for Crockham, and I said, "Mr. Jalbert, you did mine. You told me I owned this, and now you're telling Michael he owns it. What's the story here?" And he said, "Oh, well, I gave you a taped survey." And I said, "Right, I asked you for a survey so I could build. I brought it to you." I brought it to the boards, they all approved it. I built my house positioned accordingly on this land, 15 feet from the edge." And he said, "Well, I gave you one to use for your bank so you could get a loan. I didn't use my equipment and do an actual technical one, which is what Michael has had done now." So I'm not assuming that what Mr. Jalbert did isn't right now. I'm just kind of caught.
Right.
Because I did everything based on thinking it was accurate at that point. So the second request I would have is, who will be responsible to, or I guess that was my first one, who will be responsible to take care of the drainage? And who will be responsible to maintain where that sewer is, where the pumping station? I have to clean that about five or six times a year so they can see where it is, because it gets overgrown very quickly. And who will be responsible to make sure that's clean? So if there's an emergency, they can find it quickly and down to it, like we had last year. We had one. I also had a stone staircase, it's in those pictures, built along the side of my home, so that I could walk from the top of the hill down to the lake. And now, if you see that line, allegedly Michael owns part of that stone walkway. And then I also, up at the top, built a ramp. I had two railroad ties put in, and I built a ramp, because it's the only access I have from the water up to my garage. So things like bringing my lawnmower down at the beginning of the year, bringing it back at the end, bringing kayaks down, bringing them back, that's the only way I have to get there. I can't go down the stone staircase, because it's just not safe to do that. So I worry about how am I going to get my things from my backyard to my front yard without that access. And lastly, in the study, the DeRondo's plot plan for their new house, is going to be built exactly 15 feet from the backs of my house, from the side of my house. And in looking at that, and in looking at the height, it's three stories plus a roof, I would be looking at the side of their house and not the forest and tree area that I'm looking at now. That's progress. And I do understand, and I do respect their right to build. But I wondered if they would possibly consider moving the house just five feet closer to theirs, because at the moment, it's closer to my house than their house, which is on the other side, so that we could plant some kind of a green fence between us, so I could still look out at something green instead of the side of the house. And those are my only concerns. I thank you for listening. I feel they're important, and I hope to receive a reply in writing about these things before the construction begins. Are there any questions?
Well, first of all, you, I mean, we have no control, I mean, that, I mean, we can't do anything. I mean, that's just, I mean-
Progress.
Like you said, progress. So we can't do anything about, um, the drainage and pumping, I don't, I mean- Well, can I say?
Yeah, go ahead.
Have you tried to actually discuss this with Mr. DeRondo? And tried to come to some kind of a agreement, written agreement, that he would accept? Maybe there's some kind of reparation, or, you know, some monetary work you can do? See, as you said, when, years ago, when you had Mr. Jalbert do it, a lot of people didn't want to expend the money. So they had a tape survey done rather than an instrument, which requires a lot more, I mean, I know, because my husband was an engineer and a registered land surveyor. And I can tell you, many times, they held the dumb end of the tape. So it's a lot, so a lot of the things too, years ago, when they first subdivided those properties, they used to what I always called a hoot and holler survey. They just guesstimated where, "Well, it looks like this." But now you have precise instrumentation and everything. So possibly, you could work some agreement with Mr. DeRondo, since you said they're very good neighbors?
They're very nice.
As far as, you know, and maybe there's a little monetary exchange you could do or something?
Basically, would be like a civil matter between the both of you.
Exactly.
And it has nothing to do with us.
I think if you can, exactly. So I don't think we could condition it. That's my own personal opinion.
That's what I think, too.
It would be something that you have to talk to him or his family as good neighbors. And I think you'd be able to discuss it with them. Perhaps there's some way you can recapense a little bit, you know?
Well, I'm not interested in money, I'm interested-
No, I'm just saying. No, no, I know, you're not interested in money, but I'm saying, maybe you could, you know, well, I'll put a little, pay for a little of your plantings or something like that. But I would try to work it out with them. I think you'd probably be able to handle it better that way.
Right.
I just, I have a question. So the drainage system that you have, it's the drainage from your house and the driveway-
And the road.
Goes into that system.
Right.
But the system is now, you thought was on your property, but now it's on theirs?
Correct.
Yeah, I think too, it would be in his best interest to clean that out.
That's true, but I think they could be, it has to be a discussion. They have to work it out. We can't, I don't think so. That's my opinion, anyway.
As far as, this is not a conflict yet. However, the first step is always to try to ask the other side to be reasonable and tell them your concerns. Have you done that?
Yes.
Yeah, and what was their response?
I did, I told him I was concerned about the drainage system.
Right.
He said he's not building right away. He's going to take the house away, and it may be a while before he builds.
So it gives you some time, maybe, to work something out between the both of you?
Hopefully, yes.
Yeah.
Because as you heard before, they have to wait for DEP approval on something.
Now, is any of this going to change with the grade? I heard there's going to be some, I read that there's going to be some grading done?
What actually took place here is that, talking to Mr. DeRondo relative to the drainage on her property, going through his, he didn't find it as being a real encroachment, and had no aspirations of changing it. That's number one. And had no complaints on the fact that it was on his property. What it actually is, is very simplistically, it becomes a civil action between her and him, not the zoning board.
But will the grading that you're going to be doing on the property exacerbate the progress?
No, the grading on that side will not change.
And for the main sewer pump, I would check with the-
The sewer pump-
EPW.
Right, the sewer pump is on his property. That'd be very, done very easily, is that an A and R could be drawn up to give her the access for the sewer on that by putting an easement on his property. Okay, that wouldn't be a taking, it would just be an easement.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't change what you see here, you know?
Can I speak?
So how, yes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, so this is Michael DeRondo. So I wanted to highlight one thing. So then when the board came around and looked at the property, and Barbara was present, I did say that it was my intention to leave the drainage and to make sure that it's functioning and working. I mean, the drainage is as much to my benefit as it is to hers. So from that perspective, is it's my intention to continually maintain that as well. I do want to point out that, you know, our decision to move the house back to 45 feet was purely in consideration for Miss Hitchcock's view, is, you know, there's the, we moved the house back to be in line with hers and ours, so that it didn't impede her view looking down the lake. Now, from the current house we're in, to look west, there's not much lake there. So I could, if we rebuilt the house where it is now, it wouldn't really impact my view, but it would really impact hers negatively. And we had a lot of conversations over the years about that. And I, Liz, my wife and I, are very accommodating to the fact that, you know, that Barbara has had a nice view of the lake. And so that is what, I guess if we're willing to move the house back to accommodate Barbara's view, I think we are certainly going to be willing to accommodate her on, you know, making sure that her land isn't pulled up and that there's not flooding going on. So it's my intention to be a good neighbor and to do all the things that a good neighbor would do.
Thank you.
I know, I really didn't catch what he said. I only thought about half of it, so.
Pretty much accommodating.
Oh, yeah. So did he say he was going to cooperate?
Yes.
He said he was not going to, it wasn't going to get in the way of the drainage system. He's, yeah, I think that's what-
So you're satisfied and you-
I'm very happy.
Okay.
Okay. They've resolved it, right here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other people, have any questions in the audience?
Let me check on here. Is there anyone-
Anybody else having, anybody else have problems disseminating what's coming across from the television? Because I know I have bad hearing.
Yes, me.
But is there anything we can do about that? Can we put, can we change the base or whatever?
Pretty much as good as it's going to get.
I mean, I've got bad hearing as it is. Bad hearing, bad-
Me too.
Back walking, you know, you name it.
It comes back very garb, what he said was very garbled, so I really don't know what he said.
Can I ask to check the phone?
Yeah, you're checking the phone?
Is there anyone on the public line that has any comments on 100 Paradise Lane? Nope.
No. Okay, do we, anybody have any more questions? No.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Michael seconds it. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay, five to zero, unanimous. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to find that the proposal by the applicant, Michael Toronto, for the property located at 100 Paradise Lane pursuant to Chapter 20.05 and Chapter 24.09, A3 of the zoning bylaws, to extend, change, or alter pre-existing non-conforming structure to raise and rebuild the existing single-family house and build a detached garage. The new residence will be constructed 45.3 feet from the shoreline, and the detached end garage will be constructed 29.7 feet from the existing road. The proposal will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Instead, it will make, be a much improvement to the neighborhood.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? The only question I have is if conservation comes back with something and makes them move something.
That's in the special permit granting.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of the motion? Five to nothing. Good. You have another one now?
Yep.
Yeah?
Go for it.
I make a motion to grant the special permit to MAD Toronto Family Realty Trust to raise and rebuild the existing single-family house and construct a detached garage. The new resident, residents will be constructed 45 feet, 45.3 feet from the shoreline, and the detached garage will be constructed 29.7 feet from the existing road. According to the plans entitled, Existing Site Plan, MAD Toronto Family Realty Trust, 100 Paradise Lane, prepared by Jalbert Engineering, planned date 6/14/2013, DWG number 13121, and proposed site plan, MAD Toronto Family Trust, 100 Paradise Lane, prepared by Jalbert Engineering, planned date 12/16/2020, DWG number 200127, Division 2, dated 6/15/2021, and landscape plans by Ground Efforts Effects LLC, L-P-3, dated 5/26/2021, job titled Toronto, and architectural permits by Wadsworth and Associates, entitled the Toronto Residence, planned date 4/21/2021, job 21/132. A condition, all state and local permits and approvals, including Conservation Commission, must be obtained prior to the start of construction.
Okay.
Second.
So we have the motion and a second?
Discussion.
Yeah, any discussion? Well, my question was only that if conservation makes them move something-
Then they have to-
Then you would have to come back.
They have to do the whole thing over again.
Yeah.
Okay.
They would have to come back to modify or-
Conservation will not move the structures. The only issue we have is the driveway itself.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? No, all those in favor of the motion? No, five to zero. The motion passes.
Go for it, Mr. DeRondo. How you doing?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Enjoyed.
Thanks.
Keep out of trouble.
What fun is that? What fun is that, staying out of trouble?
Keep out of trouble.
You know what? I sympathize with you, because I got the same problem.
Yeah, tell me about it.
I've got to go buy something, I don't know where to go yet.
And I could hear grass growing.
As long as it's not growing over me, it's okay.
You're not pushing up the daisies, sir.
That's right.
Okay, next we have a determination on 9 Williams Road by Michael Harriman. The applicant is requesting a determination to construct a 12 by 18 and a half foot raised deck at the rear of the house. We did receive information from the town planner, Jeanne Bouvonne. Conservation Commission, which, it's not in their jurisdiction. The fire department had nothing to review for the project. The building inspector has no concerns. The Department of Public Works had no comment on the deck. So, I guess we'll start with, you can go ahead and, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but you-
It's pretty straightforward, just putting a deck on the back of the house.
You supplied a lot of information, thank you.
Try to.
I should have had you guys do my deck, at the price you put down here.
This is a corner lot. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't.
No, not at all.
Any questions?
No questions, just in the packet, on Barbara Barry, Barbara Barry's Finance Director, we got the blank sheet that, it's not signed.
Oh, I take care of that on our permitting system. So that was signed off already by her.
Oh, because we always get it signed and-
Yeah, we don't do it hand anymore, it's all, it's all on our-
I know, but we always get a signed copy.
No, we're not doing that anymore.
Oh, so that shouldn't have been included in the package?
Yeah, it's still on some of the-
Well, nobody knew about it, so I think they should have-
Paper packets, we're doing it all virtually now. It is all set.
Yeah, okay.
Because you had such detailed information, your application.
Yeah.
Nobody has any questions?
Well, that's good.
Anybody have any comments? Do we take comments from them on that?
It's not a public hearing. I can check if you would like.
Not on the-
All right. Did you, would you like to make a?
If we're all set. I'll check, I'll check real quick. Is there anyone on the public line that has comments on 9 Williams Road?
Very simple.
That's a no.
Michael, go ahead.
I make a motion to grant the determination to Michael Harriman for the property located at 9 Williams Road to construct a 12 feet by 18 dash 6 feet raised deck at the rear of the house. The proposal does not intend- The proposal does not intensify the existing or create additional non-conformities, and the owner may apply for a building permit according to the plans entitled Mortgage Inspection Plan, dated July 18, 2016.
Perfect.
Second. Marge, second it?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor of? In five to nothing. You're all set.
Take care. Have a good evening.
Remember, cut twice and remember, what is it? Measure, measure once and cut twice? Is that it?
Something like.
All right, is there anybody have any old business? No? New business?
No.
No?
Next meeting, when, next meeting, September?
Um, September 22nd. Had to move it, but so far, we haven't gotten any things, so I will let everyone know.
Yep.
That sounds good.
You don't have, you don't have anything?
Not yet.
I thought this was.
Any additional bylaws or anything that we had approved or changes or anything?
Not yet.
Anything on any of the chapters or?
On any of the what?
Anything on general bylaws or anything? No updates? Everything status quo?
Yep.
Okay.
We're good.
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mike, a turn. All right, all those in favor of adjourning? All right.
Time noted.
Our adjourn.
And a time noted, 7:25.
Five, yep. We are good.